All right, the time now is 5:33 PM. We are going to officially call this City Commission meeting to order. And I will ask that everyone please stand as Mayor Potem Rini Betas leads us in the invocation.
Forward as we gather in this City Commission meeting, let us protect our first responders, the city staff, extend your grace to our residents, granting them health, safety, and unity. Guide our decisions for the well-being of all. Amen.
Amen. Now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, united in the Constitution of America.
Now the City Attorney to read the Conflict of Interest, please.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any non-conflict of interest to the disclosures at this time?
None.
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 None. And we do have a quorum present, and we have Commissioner Lopez on Zoom and everyone else here in present for the record. Moving on to Item One, Presentation of the Awards, we have Christina.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, and our audience that is joining us here today. The Vital Statistics Department actually won a five-star gold award for their work. And they are with us here today. A lot of what they do is kind of behind the scenes, but a few requested your birth certificate ever. You've probably come across them. I know that I've interacted with them when I requested my, a copy of my birth certificate. So today we have with us Kristal Ortiz. If you could stand to be recognized, Kristal. As well as the staff in Vital Statistics, which is Gabriela Montoya, Priscilla Garza, and Michelle Holfi. Melissa, excuse me. And of course, they couldn't do this without the Health Department Director, which oversees Vital Statistics. So I'd like to invite Shannon up to the mic for a quick speech so that she can tell us what this award means to them and about their work in Vital Statistics. Shannon?
Thank you. Again, this is the 23rd year that Vital Statistics has been awarded this achievement. However, this is Kristal's first year as being our local registrar to continue that tradition of receiving this achievement. What is required of this is our Vital Statistics Department has to file birth and death certificates within 24 hours at a 96% rate, which is extremely high. So they work very hard to get that done on a regular basis to continue to maintain this five-star award. It is a small department, but they do everything that they need to get done. So we're pretty proud of them. Thank you.
So how about a big round of applause for the Vital Statistics Department? And we'd like to invite them all to join the Mayor and City Commission for a photo, as well as to receive and be presented the award.
Wonderful. Ladies, if you'd like to approach so we can take a photo. And I just want to express how proud I am of this continuous opportunities that you have provided for the staff and under your leadership now that this is continuing. That's amazing. I'm so appreciative of all your hard work. And that's a, it's difficult, 96%. That's a, that's a high bar. So we're very proud.
Congratulations once again to the Vital Statistics Department. A lot of their work as public servants is behind the scene, and we really appreciate them. And thank you very much for all your hard work. Next up, the Mayor and City Commission are obviously extremely supportive of small businesses here in Harlingen. And that's why the Mayor and City Commission started the Mayor's Business of the Month. And this recognizes local businesses. This month's Mayor's Business of the Month Award goes to KK's Closet on 77 Sunshine Strip here in Harlingen. And that's not too far from Harlingen High School. Before the Mayor and the City Commission present KK's Closet with the award, we want to show a quick video for a quick glimpse into their business.
Our mother and daughter.
And she's my wonderful mom. I wouldn't want to be working with anybody else.
It was during the pandemic. It was 2020. My business before this, I used to make homecoming mums, garters, masks. And there was no school. So I said, well, I gotta do something to make money. So I told my oldest daughter, let's get together and open up a little boutique online. We'll just sell from home, do what we can. And it went really well. So then we expanded to a brick-and-mortar over there in El Mercado. We started there in a little eight-by-twenty room, super small. It was literally a closet. And then it grew. But we try to do contemporary. Like as a matter of fact, yesterday I had a lady in here, beautiful classy lady. And she told me, she goes, I love coming in here because even though I'm older, we still have cute contemporary clothes that, you know, make us look stylish and with the trends. So that's what we kind of aim for.
And we also have athletic wear as well. We just launched that out today. So we're super excited for that. We love to make everybody feel welcomed and they get to come in here and try on everything. And, you know, we love to have girls try on new things.
We are size-inclusive. We do carry sizes zero all the way up to 3X. And we're expanding that line. We just expanded our shoe line. We've got a new room kind of coming together back there. We have, that's our 2024 surprise. So come over to and check us out at KK's. We'd love to see you ladies here, try on something new. And we'd love to have you in and fit you in something you normally wouldn't like to try on. So come check us out if you haven't already.
And make sure to follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and also we have an online store. It's kkscloset1-square-site.
How about a round of applause for them? And they want to sit in the back, but I'd like to call their names to be recognized. If Carly and Kelly could please stand to be recognized. And they are the mother and daughter who own KK's Closet. And one of my favorite pieces from there is the 956 necklace. So they have amazing products. And I'm confident that our mayor wants to share a few words with you all about this award.
So I'll just ask you ladies to come up here to the podium. I, every mayor's Business of the Month is special and unique. And the community is also involved and get to vote on who's going to be the next recipient. And I knew that you were going to be one, I mean, even before. Just because you are both so amazing and you're just, really just sunshine. Like I don't know how else to put it. You know, you walk into the store and no matter how crazy and hectic your day is, both of you have big smiles on your faces and are excited and welcoming. And it's, it's really, it's really inspiring to see a story, the resilience of coming through, going through COVID, opening through COVID, and expanding. And I know that the community has embraced your, the vision that you had to be all-inclusive. I think it's difficult sometimes for women to be able to stay on trend, right? Because you don't know if you're going to buy something online, if it's going to fit you when you get home. But you ladies, no matter how difficult clients can be, you take your time and your patience and give them that opportunity, whether it's, what is it, the Judy Blues or the more conservative suits. Actually, I got a suit from KK's Closet when we had TML over at the island. And we had an event, and I was able to get a short suit set. And it was blue, it was beautiful. And I got a ton of compliments, and I said, go to KK's because you all are amazing. So it's incredible. I'm super, super excited for you. I even saw you on the news. I promise we didn't plan it that way, but I saw you on the news. So it's, you are definitely, I see you in boutiques all across the region, and I'm excited for your success. So congratulations. I don't know if you want to say a few words before we join you for a photo.
Yes, so we were really surprised when Christina told us the news yesterday. We were shocked because again, we just came on the news yesterday morning and after that, I was like, is this a joke? This is really funny. So we're honored, and we wouldn't want our business in any other city but Harlingen. We love it here. We're from here. This is our hometown. And thank you for all that you're doing for small businesses. I know you've got the Small Business Committee, and it's amazing. I love being on it as well. So just thank you for all that you're doing for small businesses. We appreciate you.
And we appreciate you. Commissioner will join us. Thank you, Christina. And moving on to Citizens Communication, Amanda?
First one is Raymond Reyes.
Mayor, Commissioner Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive, here in Harlingen, long-term resident, just about. Basically, I don't know, it's kind of, I don't know. I mean, sometimes I wonder actually what's going on. But I do know in speaking with some of the different departments that I've been inclined to communicate with lately, as far as the department heads go in some of these departments, it seems pretty apparent in some instances that there's a lack of funding or decisions that were made, I guess, when the budget was made or put together or analyzed or, you know. I'm somewhat familiar with these budgets, being with my background and having several different businesses and things of that nature. So I would just ask that, you know, it be in the background or, you know, the foresight that the goal of the Mayor and the Commission and everybody that's involved with the administration of the city is for the citizens. It's not for any personal benefit. It's not for anybody to make contacts on the wayward side. And I'm not saying that's going on, but I'm an old dog when it comes to things like this. I've been around. I was with the City of Brownsville for 10 years. I've done interesting things for the behalf of interesting agencies. And it happens and stuff. I just really plead that no matter what the situation is, that you guys are elected for a reason to do the right things, to make sure the departments that take care of the citizens' needs are funded to the best that can possibly happen. It's not always going to happen. You're not always going to get your wish list and stuff. I'm not driving around in a Ferrari yet, maybe one day, but not today. So as long as that's kept in mind, then I think it's a good thing. But, you know, just right now, sitting down, I'm getting all these emails and stuff about the golf course. Now, probably because I used to be a partner that owned Connewood Country Club that has a golf course, very expensive to maintain, I didn't know certain things that they just sent me. But I'll probably be sending out an email later and things. Because for whatever reason, maybe because I say stuff or I speak up, people come to me. They send me stuff. I've made certain individuals aware of certain things that are going on. Because again, as I've stated before, I live here. My grandkids are here. I don't want to throw us under the bus if there's something that can be nipped. So again, you guys do the best you can with what you got. We'll keep moving forward. And obviously, my time is up. You all have a good evening, and I have to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
The second one and the last one, Mayor, is Donna Rae Leonard.
Okay. Ms. Leonard, if you'd like to approach the podium, did you sign up?
No, I declined.
Oh. Okay, all right. Is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to Item Two, the Approval of Minutes of the Regular Meeting of December 6, 2023. Is there a motion?
Motion, dear President. Just a couple of changes, if you don't mind. On page one, it has that I had no extensions. I had two, one on 2F and one on four. If you look further in the minutes, you'll see that I did in fact abstain.
Did you get that?
Otherwise, good to go. And I'll make a motion to approve subject to those amendments.
Okay. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, Item Three. Is there any items that need to be taken out of consent? Okay. And is there a motion to approve Items 3A through G?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Moving on to New Business. Item Four, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Preliminary Construction Plans in Final Platte with a Variance Request Regarding the Minimum Lot Depth for Lot 26, Block 1 for the Proposed Allison Subdivision Bearing a Legal Description of 27.91 acres of land out of Block 48, Long Sea Hill subdivision. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. Two months ago, I came before you for the proposal to take over a ditch from the Irrigation District for a proposed subdivision. So it was approved, and we're doing the paperwork, paperwork to take over that ownership of that ditch from the Irrigation District. I'm working with Mr. Sassi on that. So this is a subdivision that will be the result of that assistance. It's a single-family homes. That's the ditch that I was talking about. And this is the proposed subdivision that will benefit from that action. And so they need a variance on one of the lots because it doesn't meet the depth requirements. It meets the area requirements but does not meet the depth requirement. And so there's no other way to design the subdivision. And so, and it's just one lot that is needing the variance. And that's why this subdivision is coming before you today is because of that variance that is needed. And then the letter requesting the variance. This went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended approval unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Item Five, Public Hearing to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading Amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Article 10, Section 111 through 280, Special Sign Categories permitted and prohibited by clarifying the allowable signage for feather flag sign for commercial establishments exceeding 100 linear feet at the longest point. Javier?
Yes, I gave a presentation two, three months ago about this, to allow the bigger, the bigger businesses to have more than one feather flag, feather flag sign at one time. And so what we're proposing is if you exceed 50, if you have 100 at the longest point, you qualify for two, and then 50 feet after that, one more. So I gave the example the last time. Academy is 303 feet long, so they could qualify for six at one time. Texas Roadhouse is 100 feet at the longest point, so they could qualify for two at the same time. But I'm also clarifying on the fees, that is going to be just a one-time fee of $20. If they renew in person, it will be $10. If they renew online, or it could be an email, $0. So it would be just a one, one-time payment of 20 per year for business. If they renew simply by emailing the City Planner, that, you know, they will qualify for four per year. So by just emailing the planner, I would like to get us another month. It could be handled that way, and there's no, there wouldn't be any more fees.
So what's the maximum amount of time that they'll be able to have the flags?
So it's four per year, 30 days each, right? So four months out of the year.
So they have all four, so two months.
No, it's, it's, so if it's a smaller business, it's just one feather flag sign, right? If it's a bigger business, potentially two or three. And then they could do another, another month later, the two or three, whatever they qualify for. And then later on, another one.
The duration of the permit is for 30 days, correct? So they would get that four times a year. So it'd be for four months and 30 days each.
And if they, if they qualify for, based on the square footage of the building, right? It would be one flag, two flags, four, six. They can do that four times a year at, at no additional cost, so long as they communicate via online, right?
Online or a simple email to the City Planner?
Which is, I think, one, I don't know who, and the Commission had asked what, what time is involved for staff to dedicate to doing the permits. And so that's to alleviate that, to be able to not put that expense onto the business and to allow them to have those flags up for longer, not longer periods, but more times, more frequently throughout the year.
Correct.
Okay. And no one came to the public hearing for planning and zoning?
No, the EDC expressed a support, but nobody showed up to the public hearing.
Okay.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, not unanimously, but it was a recommendation for approval.
Okay. And so now we, is there any other discussion? Okay, so now we have the public hearing. This will be the second public hearing on this since there was already one in planning and zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption of this ordinance? Having no one to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. I do, okay. I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
He needs to read it.
Yes.
In ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Article 10, Section 111 to 80, Special Sign Categories permitted and prohibited by clarifying the allowable signage for feather flag signs for commercial establishments exceeding 100 linear feet at the longest point and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
All right, entertain a motion.
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Wonderful. Javier, I was going to say, this says not, not on this item, but I was reviewing, when reviewing the packet, I noticed on Section 111 dash 280, Special Sign Categories, for the next, our next meeting, can you, I wanted to look at this on terms of political signs and temporary signs and where they can be placed. I did have a lot of people reach out to me, and I know election season is coming up, coming upon us, or it's here, in terms of when the signs need to be removed and what the city is doing to make sure that once the election is over, that those are, are being removed. Because there are some that are there for, you know, that, for a very long time. And if we can address that.
In the city ordinance, we do not have time limitations.
Right.
But I think there's a state law, so I'll, I'll get back to you.
If you can look at that, so that way, whatever the state law is, we should be enforcing that. And then maybe the Commission wants to discuss if, you know, if we want to do anything more strict.
More strict. Yeah, we could always go more strict.
Okay. That's all I had on that, thank you. Item Six, Public Hearing to Adopt an Ordinance on First Reading for a Rezoning Request for Residential Single Family District to Residential Duplex District for a Property Located at 501 West Fillmore Avenue Bearing a Legal Description of Lot 1, Block 132, Harlingen Original Town Site. Javier?
This is a vacant lot at the corner of Fillmore and E Street that they're proposing at a new duplex in the property. You have the Robin Hood Apartments to the north and single-family residential all around. So this is the aerial photo, vacant lot, single-family homes, and then the Robin Hood Apartments across the street. Survey of the property in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan is still low-density residential. Photo of the property from Fillmore, from E Street. And this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. No one spoke in opposition, and the Board recommended approval unanimously.
Commissioner, I think, is this your district? Do you have any questions?
Nobody mentioned anything to me, so, and I did realize it's been vacant for, for a few years. But if nobody, if the residents didn't have an issue, I don't have an issue with it.
All right. Any other questions? This time, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against adoption of this ordinance? Having no one here to speak for or against, we'll close the public hearing. Ask the City Attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen rezoning from residential, single-family, R1 district to residential duplex, R2 district for a property located at 501 West Fillmore Bearing a Legal Description of Lot 1, Block 132, Harlingen Original Town Site.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Javier. Item Seven, Consideration and Possible Action Authorizing the City Manager to Approve a Lease Agreement with Vantage Tag Systems for 74 Golf Cards with Yamaha GPS Systems to be used at the Tony Butler Golf Course during fiscal year 24 through 2028. Jeff?
Yes, ma'am. This is the, the kill switch that we talked about that will save the, we talked about it a couple meetings ago, where it will cause the carts to shut off if they're driven too close to the greens or in areas that we don't want the carts to go. And then this will help save the, the new renovations on the course so we keep carts off of those areas.
We will have to pay for this out of general fund. So far this year, our sales tax collections are 356,000 over last year's for the first two months of the fiscal year, so we have plenty of funds to, to draw from.
I do want to note that this is probably not going to even go into effect until next October because the carts probably will not be here until then.
And, and the cost is approximately 13,000 a year. It's payable over the five-year lease, so staff recommends approval.
It's fine with me?
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item Eight, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve an Inter-local Agreement Between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Irrigation District, Cameron County Number One Granting the City Permission to Use Land for the Construction and Maintenance of the Long Sea Hill Destination Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the Long Sea Hill Destination Park and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Javier? Um, that's how great you are. Item nine, consideration impossible action to adopt the Harlingen EDC updated fiscal year 2024 through the 2027 three-year strategic plan. Orlando?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, uh, City Commission, good evening. My name's Orlando Campos, CEO of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. I'm bringing to you the, um, Economic Development Corporation's three-year strategic plan, which was unanimously approved by our Board of Directors. You will recall that, uh, all of you participated in a two-day retreat over the summer to look at our strategic plan, develop goals for the organization, and so this is the plan that synthesizes those two days' worth of effort. The participants in the two-day retreat not only included all of you, but also the Board of Directors of the HEDC, as well as key stakeholders from the community that provided critical input for the plan. The plan does include a SWOT analysis with critical information and input that was provided by all the participants, um, as well as additional input from everyone who participated. So we are seeking, uh, your approval in adopting the, uh, three-years strategic plan, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I do want to commend Orlando for putting this event together. I thought it was phenomenal, the ability to work alongside HASD, TSDC, all the other local entities and organizations, uh, and really kind of get all reduction around, start pulling the sled in the right direction, and all in the, at the same time. So Orlando, I really want to commend you and your staff and, uh, for, and the EDC Board members for putting it together. But again, you guys just did an awesome job.
Thank you. The plan will...
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Orlando. Item 10, consideration impossible action to prioritize recreational trail projects and to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Recreational Trails Program. Anna, or...
No, I'm going to be handling this, ma'am. We have an opportunity to submit a grant, uh, for trails, and the commi, the commission indicated that they wanted to have an opportunity to review those projects before they're submitted. The parks that are being considered are City Lake Soccer Complex, Sports Complex, and Hugh Ramsey. Javier's going to give us a presentation on those, so Javier, if you would...
Yes, so, um, this is the Harlingen Sports Complex, and, um, there is an existing, there is an existing trail, uh, that, which is outlined in yellow. Right now, it's, um, decomposed granite. There's a lot of erosion, and so what we wanted to do is to renovate that trail. This is almost a mile long, um, and depending on, you know, how much money we get from Parks and Wildlife, uh, we can do just that section, or we can, of course, extend it all the way around, um, the complex. But for now, um, this is what we're proposing. The cost estimate, estimate that we came up with is 425,000. That's material and labor. That's doing it in-house. It would be a nine-foot wide trail, um, out of asphalt.
Now, Javier, the max grant from Parks and Wildlife is 500,000?
500,000. Next one we have is City Lake. Those of you, of you have, that use City Lake, um, it's very narrow, um, it needs a lot of work. The lights, you know, they're antiquated. We're trying to get those replaced. But this one is, is just under a mile. It's 4,002, 4,426 linear feet. Our cost estimate for this one is 167,708. And the reason that there's a, a difference is because we were, we were going to add five feet to the existing trail and make it 10 feet wide. And so use the existing trail and just do an overlay on the existing part, portion of it. So anyway, this, this project here is 167,000, uh, what we came up with an estimate. Here's this Harlingen Soccer Complex, which is the longest one that we have, um, on, on this proposal. It's 11,727 linear feet, which is about 2.2, 2.22 miles. Again, this would be nine feet wide asphalt trail. Currently, it's, uh, also a decomposed granite trail. But again, we've, we've lost a lot of the material. There's a lot of ruts and, and there's a lot of erosion, so we wanted to come back and renovate this trail as well. We do get a lot of usage on this one. And then, of course, Vestal. And, uh, y'all have seen this, this plan before. This is, there's no trail at Vestal, uh, so this would be a new construction. And so this one is, um, .62 miles. It'll be nine feet wide out of asphalt. This one here, we've estimated, excuse me, uh, 371,839, uh, dollars. The, um, city manager did mention, uh, Hugh Ramsey, but as we're looking at it, there's a lot of trails in there, and so, um, I think we may get a lot of pushback if we start clearing out some of the trees, and so, um, we may look at that one for another day and come up sort of like with a master plan for Hugh Ramsey, and then, of course, eventually make the connection, uh, when we get Phase Three of the Arroyo Corral, uh, Trail Extension.
I think in addition to that, when we ever decide to do something there, we'll probably have to have a meeting with the Audubon Society and...
Yes, sir.
The Birding Festival Group, just because they help in the maintenance of those...
Correct.
Of that particular park, so.
Yeah, so we didn't have a chance to meet with them, um, ahead of time, so that's why we left it out, um, but we looked at the overall map of it.
I mentioned that, because that wasn't originally in the email that I received from you, so.
Yes, sir. Yes. Uh, so these are the projects that we, um, are presenting, um, and we would kind of hope to, uh, select one, so, uh, we can work on, on the application.
We have to pick one? Not all of them?
No, just one.
There isn't a money trade?
Well, I do want to thank you, um, Gabe, and, and Javier, too, for presenting this in a, in a timely fashion and getting it in front of the commission. I know before there was, um, we, we had to, to make a, a decision on, on some, on grant money and with not a lot of time, and this is definitely what we like to see, and I think it's a healthy discussion for the commission to, to have, to decide on where the best, uh, course of action will be. But I will just, my, my input would be if it is 500,000 that we can apply for...
Yes.
Then we should be looking at something that's going to reach that 500, 500,000. So any, any, we don't want to leave any money on the table.
Mayor, our, um, our grant writer just texted me saying that the max amount is 375.
Okay.
So that changes...
Okay, I thought so, but I thought if it's 500,000, this changes things. It's 375,000. Okay. So having that, um, because there were some others. Javier, can you do more than one? Is it, you have to pick one project? Is it money or is it one project?
I think it's one project, right?
One project? Okay. So, um...
The, the advantage that we have at Vestal, um, is that we've already done the survey. We did get a lot of input from the community, um, and so we have that when we originally were applying to Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, so we can use some of that data. We already have the cost estimates, um, all that information. So it may, it'll make it easier for Anna when we, uh, prepare the application.
I, Vestal Park is, it's been the orphan stepchild of Harlingen. I'd like to see the money go there.
I know you agree.
I'm sorry. One other thing that I, I need to bring up is that we do have some money from CDPG still, um, for Vestal. And so if, if we could, I mean, we could use it for match, uh, matching, um, for the grant. It's not a lot.
So the grant is going to require, is going to require matching?
Yes, sir.
How much? How much?
Is it 50/50? 20%. So it's 80/20.
It's 80/20?
Yeah, so 80% they would provide, would do the 20%.
So, um, I, I, you know, I tend to agree with, with Mike. When we're looking at all of the, the parks that you showed, they already have a trail, right? We, the City Lake has one, the Sports Complex has one, the, um, over at Wilson Road has one, although that one needs a lot of, a lot of work also. But Vestal doesn't have one, so it makes sense to, to at least consider the fact that it's a neighborhood park and it would, it would do a lot for that community.
Yeah, and before I make a motion to do Vestal Park, I just want to make a comment. You had mentioned it, so it's on the table, about extending the Arroyo Trail East in District 3 along the Arroyo, and I will fight that vehemently against it, because we would have to seize property from 22 landowners. And I mentioned Mr. Kemp, and he's in his 90s. He was my ninth-grade civics teacher. I saw him this summer, and I told him that I, I mentioned him, and he said, "Thank you for remembering." So I'm against eminent domain. So I'll make a motion to accept Vestal Park.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Anna. Item 11, consideration impossible action to amend the budget for the Harlingen Health Department and add 11 new positions for the animal shelter.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Josh and me, this is the city manager. We're requesting to add 11 positions to the health department. We had the, uh, the RP's, were posted, uh, closed yesterday. We have no summits for any other agencies to take over the animal shelter, so therefore we are requesting to add positions. Shannon, we'll go over the presentation quickly.
Good evening. So as far as operating the animal, the Harlingen Animal Shelter, um, there's a list of the agencies we've reached out to, Laguna Madre, Humane Society, Brownsville Animal Defense, Palm Valley Humane Society, No Kill RGV. There is a typo who responded. I had misunderstood. I thought No Kill RGV had responded with a proposal, but they had not. They are interested in trying to assist us with No Kill. But we haven't made it that far. We are going to work towards that, but this is just for the operations of the actual shelter right now. So it was also advertised in Valley Morning Star, advertised on Facebook. We plan to have a, an animal shelter manager to manage the building, an animal shelter supervisor, um, and just as a side note, this building will need to be in operation seven days a week. With animals on site, it cannot technically be closed and us have no staff there on any given day. The animals need to be taken care of every day. An adoption coordinator. We want to do our very, very best to get these animals adopted, uh, sent to rescue, fostered, whatever the case may be. That is absolutely what we want. And an animal shelter administrative secretary. Four full-time animal care technicians, three part-time animal care technicians. That would be the expenditures. So we're looking, uh, for payroll at about 365,937. This is our current organizational chart. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those.
Yeah, quite a many. You mentioned euthanasia. So one can obtain a certificate to legally euthanize animals, apparently.
Yes.
Yeah. Who buys the drugs? Who has the authority to buy the drugs? Does it have, can anybody, can you, can the city, or does a veterinarian need to buy the drugs?
The city currently has a DEA registration number to where we can purchase the, the euthanasia medication.
And what are these drugs? Do you know?
It's sodium, sodium penobarbital.
Okay. And are they behind, this is the nurse in me coming out with narcotics in a locked cabinet. Will they be behind a locked cabinet?
What we currently have is behind triple lock. I believe law requires it to be behind double lock.
Okay.
But we want to take that a step further. We completely understand that's not a, a drug we want to play with or, or want anybody to have access with, so we absolutely will do our due diligence to protect that and keep that locked up at all times.
Thank you for that response. Will we be hiring any veterinarians to do, uh, spay and neuters?
So I'm actually, I've actually talked to one veterinarian. I called a different one today, um, when I had a chance, and she's actually out. She's ill. We want, we're looking at trying to have a vet come in, um, multiple times a week, but we'd need to work that out with them to do animal assessments, to evaluate animals, to assist us in making recommendations if that animal is sick, um, helping to tell us what is wrong with that animal. Is it possible to, to treat it relatively inexpensive, or is it going to be something that's going to cost thousands of dollars, um, to try to treat medically? But we want a licensed veterinarian to assist us in doing that.
Okay.
We all, we are as well wanting to look at spay-neuter. That probably would not happen on day one, but we absolutely want to look at that.
And then, um, dog comes in with parvo, cat comes in with feline leukemia. Will you be testing all animals for these diseases?
Those are going to have, we're going to have to evaluate the cost of those tests. I have contacted one, MWI was the first one that I was able to contact. I plan to contact more, um, but we want to look at the cost.
Who?
MWI, Midwestern, uh, I don't remember the I.
Okay.
But it's veterinary medicine.
They provide the tests?
Yes, they provide parvo tests, feline leukemia tests. And so we want to look at those costs. I mean, we, we want to be responsible. We want to do what we can for the animals, but as with everything, we have a budget. So those are all new to us, and we need to get the prices on those.
Right, and so then, uh, you know, you had your cost of, of personnel for the current year would be 365, um, but you're not pricing in a veterinarian, you're not pricing in food, you're not, uh, pricing in, uh, parvo, leukemia tests, uh, you're not pricing in vaccines, you're not pricing in the veterinarian. So the cost will be, what, double?
Commissioner, we have a commitment from the 4B to fund, uh...
For the who?
From the 4B.
Oh, okay, 4B.
To fund spay-neuter services. So the, the, the thought process is that we probably will not bring one onboard, a veterinarian, but we'll work with them to actually issue vouchers for vet, for spay-neuter for the animals.
But nonetheless, the cost will be much higher than presented by the city, whether it comes from the city tax dollars, uh, or if it comes from 4B, which is city tax dollars. So the cost will be, um, significantly higher than thought of and presented, and as I said yesterday, uh, gravity's not the most important law in the universe. It's the law of unintended consequences. And so I, I believe you're going to find costs much higher, and just so that you're all aware of that.
So I'll just add that the agenda item is, um, consideration impossible action for the new positions. And so what it looks as that it is roughly three, what is it, three?
364.
364, and that is for the staff. So in order to, so what I'm looking at is to be fully staffed at the shelter in terms of, um, the part-time, the full-time, somebody to run the shelter is less than $400,000 in salaries alone. That's what it costs to run the shelter with staff.
Yes.
And then clearly there's going to be additional costs when it comes to medications and, and things of that nature. The spay and neuter, we hope to have the voucher system, and I know that we had 180,000 allocated already for that. So, um, I'm going to, I did speak with Gabe, and I think it'd like to increase that to 200,000 from the 4B board if they accept, so that way we can do the spay and neuter. And then the veterinarian is not going to be a, uh, employee, and I do believe that we've had some reach out that want to volunteer service as well. So potentially we have a, a vet that will, um, come and help with that at no cost, and we fully expect the shelter to also open its doors to volunteers.
Absolutely.
A ton of folks have been reaching out, excited about the opportunity to volunteer, and so I think that the, it's very conservative in terms of salaries for... And so, I think that the, it's very conservative in terms of salaries for payroll anyhow for the, for the shelter. So I think that that's significant. And you need those folks to, to run that.
Yes.
But I do understand Commissioner Mike in terms of the additional cost, but I think that's not before us today and we'll get there.
Okay, I for one have to agree with Mike. This is going to be double or quadruple the cost of the 400 that we were giving out to the Humane Society. At the stance right now, you're looking at 92% of what we gave them. And they took care of that, and that was a nonprofit service, okay? We're going to take the cost on this. We will definitely be looking at three times the cost. What is your budget as of right now or as of yesterday?
Again, I don't believe that that is, I understand the discussion and I think that that's a healthy discussion, but I don't, the budget, it is not, it's to amend the budget for these 11 positions, not to have the health director tell you exactly what the budget is for the shelter.
One of the things that was brought up was that this would be open for seven, seven days out of the week.
Right.
All right? So you're going to have staff for seven days out of the week.
Add up a cost of under 400,000 for the year, yes.
And this, that includes overtime?
That includes the seven days a week. And there's part-time employees. Is that correct?
At this moment, we don't anticipate getting overtime at this point.
You are?
We're not.
You're not?
It's just salary for the hours that we're estimated to be open. We're also planning to look at, yes, how much cost it's going to cost us for supplies and other items that we're going to need.
Have you considered, one of the things that will happen is that you're going to be overrun with people giving out their pets?
We understand.
And you're going to have to take 100% because that's what you wanted in the past?
This is only going to be for Harlingen residents.
It doesn't matter.
I want to just remind the commission that it was a consensus of the entire commission to move forward in this direction. And so, we need to support staff and in this endeavor because this is the direction that we are going. And maybe we can have, and I encourage that we have it on the agenda once we have those, those final numbers for the commission to discuss. But this is the direction that we are going. This is months and months of trying to collaborate, having meetings with the commission, and every single commissioner understood that this is the direction that we're going. So to deviate from that now, it is, it's probably not the right, not the right time.
It might disagree with what you, what you had wanted in the past and what you want right now, but you and I will have a little discussion afterwards.
No, we don't have to have a discussion afterwards, Commissioner. What I'm saying is that this was a consensus of the commission that we would go out for an RFP. We did that, that we would not renew the contract with the Humane Society. And that was a consensus of the commission. And so, to sit here and to say otherwise is just completely inappropriate because it gives the wrong impression to the community. And so, as much as we wanted to move forward with the Humane Society, they had an opportunity to apply to, for the RFP. Have they applied?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So we could be having a conversation with potentially moving forward with them. Should they have applied, provided the documentation, and been able to, to show the community how they were going to move forward? And that did not happen. So here we are, and this is for the 11 positions.
Yeah, to get us back on track, let's just, I'm going to make motion to approve these positions.
Thank you.
And I will second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post?
opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Moving on to the board appointments. Is there any board appointments, Commissioner?
Mayor, we skipped item number 12.
I did?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that was mine. All right, okay. Item 12 is consideration and possible action to create an advisory accessibility board. And I did have this put on the agenda. It doesn't necessarily need to have action tonight, but I wanted to make sure that that was a possibility. It was more so, as you know, I have been struggling with my fractured foot and trying to get around town and here in the community as well as city buildings. And it has given me a perspective. I wish, you know, it would have been in a different way for me to take these, these views, but I've noticed a lack of accessibility within our community. And I thought that it would be wise for us to consider creating an advisory board, an advisory accessibility board, to be able to bring members of our community that do have disabilities so that they can advise the commission on, are our city buildings accessible to, to the community, all, all members of the community, the, the ease of getting around within our community, and just providing us guidance on how we can do better to serve that population. And I know that there was some talk about, when we did our town hall initially, and I know that commission, city management, city staff, there was some, some concerns and they got on that immediately, made some handicap parking at the community center and did some other different, I guess, changes in terms of crosswalks and things of that nature. But I think we could do more, and so I would recommend that we create a board.
If I could be the historian.
Yes.
So maybe eight, nine, 10, 11 years ago, under the American Disabilities Act, which governs all of this, accessibility and the rules and regs of how many parking spots and handicap and all that, a group filed suit against us, against the city because we didn't have enough wheelchair ramps at intersections and such. And so, the city said, "We hear you. We're going to put in wheelchair ramps in lots of places." And I speak as one with a replaced left knee and two broken legs. Yeah, and, and two broken legs. Trust you me, I know what you're, what you're talking about. I've been there. And so, I believe this may be from the Department of Redundancy, that the American Disabilities Act already does this. All we need to do is be more cognizant and aware of where we need wheelchair ramps and perhaps another handicap parking space.
I think
without creating a whole nother level of government or advisory.
Well, I do, and again, we don't have to take any action on it. I think that this is something that the commission can consider. And if it's something that you want to do, I would, obviously, I'd be an advocate for it. And I think that we should do it. And because, yes, we are, I'll give you an example. This is, that is federal law, right? And so, I took a trip to, to New York for a trial because on my, the other hat that I wear is I'm a lawyer, and I had a trial in New York, went out there and didn't have the boot. This was pre all of this that's been going on. And every place that I visited, I would have not been able to go had I had the boot because New York City, even though we have federal protections, they're grandfathered in, in, in these different areas. And so, you go to a restaurant, you got to walk upstairs, walk downstairs, you know, going into buildings, and it was very, very difficult. And so, you don't appreciate the fact that you can't get in and out until you're in that position. And so, I think it would not hurt to have someone from District Three, District Four, District Five, and I would encourage it, be an individual from your specific district that wants to serve, that has a disability, and to give us their point of view on how Harlingen serves them for those, for those, for those reasons. And it, and it may be, not necessarily need to be an advisory board. Maybe it could be an ad hoc committee and it could dissolve at some point. That could potentially work. But again, I don't have an ordinance before you. It was just so that there could be, I'm planting the seed, so that way you can think about it. And if it's something that you want to do, then I'll ask Gabe to, to bring it before us in the next
What's funny is my daughter taught English in Thailand. I went and visited her. We spent a few days in Bangkok, and one of my first comments to her was, "But you cannot be disabled in this city." Other countries.
Yes, we, I do think that we do, we, you know, we do do a lot, but we could always do, do more. So those are my thoughts. And we don't have anything to take action on because there is not an ordinance before you, but if, is there any other discussion?
I think this is a good idea. Anytime we can get some more input from the community, especially people that are in those situations of being disabled, I think it's a good thing. So I would be in favor of this. But let's think about it.
All right. Okay. So now, we'll go to board appointments.
No, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Daniel's next.
Oh, sorry, Daniel.
Oh, no, nothing, none.
Okay. To replace Wayne Lowery on Downtown Improvement Board, Bill DeBrook, and to fill a vacant chair.
Isn't Bill already on the D I D?
Well, Bill contacted me, and he said he's not.
Really?
Would I appoint him?
I didn't remove him.
Okay.
If he wants to be your pick. Where is Bill?
I don't know.
It's, it's, it may be that he is, isn't that right, Amanda?
Yeah.
He's on it, Amanda?
Huh?
He's on the board right now?
Somebody ought to inform him.
I would.
Double check, but yes.
Well, let her double check before.
Okay. And then for Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Rick Cavassos.
Rick or Ray?
Rick.
Hi. All right, Commissioner?
None.
None, but I have a quick question.
Okay.
How many of these boards actually meet? Because I know the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board, I don't think they've met in a while. The Senior Citizens Advisory Board, from my understanding, they haven't met in a long time. Because we keep, we're pointing people to these boards, but are they actually like, you know, they're, they're giving us their time to serve on these boards, but are we actually actively going out there and making sure that they're meeting or anything? I mean.
The museum board also, I get queried about that all the time. How come they never meet? I think there was a death of whoever was in charge of it, and nobody's stood up to
I don't think they have quorum. I know I made an appointment, Commissioner, you made an appointment, and I think some of the other ones did pass, pass away. I don't know if there's, but maybe to solve this, Gabe, and I know that Amanda, you helped me last year, and so did, so did you, Josh, if we can get all of the chairs again and we can, we can meet and we can talk about whether they're meeting or not and dissolve any that are absolutely not meeting, and just to have that informal type of discussion.
We can do that, Mayor. But just to clarify, just to clarify on, on Bill DeBrook, his term expired, but he's still on the board because he hasn't been replaced. So you may want to reappoint him.
Okay.
No, you.
Okay, well, back in motion again.
There we go. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. And, yes. Item 14, executive session pursuant to Government Code Section 551.071 Attorney Consultation, Deliberation Regarding Real Estate in Section 551.087 Economic Development relating to the following project, Project Alphabet. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Second, or motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. The time is now 6:37 PM, and we all, we will be in executive session. The time is now 7:07 PM, and we are out of executive session. Item 15, consideration and possible action regarding item 14A as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion to approve subject illegal.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. And that is the meeting. Thank you. We are adjourned.